Motion carries. Need approval of Monday, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. It was a very well-run meeting, nice and short.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? I'm gonna abstain since I was not here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries next to it. All right, item number one, appropriation resolution. Uh, this is Iowa Code Section three-three-one-four-three-four requires the board supervisors to appropriate the amounts deemed necessary for each county officers and departments. The board hereby appropriates eighty-five percent of each of the fiscal year twenty-four budgeted expenditures for each of the county offices and departments. This is uh, seventy-seven after the every year.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriations resolution. For fiscal year twenty-four.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, roll call. Osman? Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stan Rico? Yes.
Minus.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll pass this around and first. Item number two is set for fiscal year twenty-four salaries. For resolution number twenty-two-three dash zero-one-two. We didn't have a public hearing for this too, so.
I'll make a motion through the hours. Thank you all.
I can second.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, roll call.
So the resolution you signed, yeah, was actually just a copy of the resolution you guys did when we did the motion.
Okay, so we just need a second and motion. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number three, approve the payables.
Do you know why there's two payments in there for uh, Western Iowa tourism?
They have the same amount.
No, once you're five hundred, it ends up four hundred and fifty. Well, yeah.
Um, while we're on this, looking through this, um, I know I had sent out a couple of concerns and I do want to keep it on the forefront that the board reviews the policy of cell phone reimbursement or paid cell phone for the whole county. So I will be in contact with John Warren, so I have to be involved as well.
I see there was one in there for you for thirty-eight hundred for that hydraulic pump.
We're setting up an account with that vendor, but first transaction they would not do. They would have to get checked. It had been a wire transfer credit card.
Okay, all right, that's.
I prefer not to do it that way.
Well, that's kind of where that's, that makes sense. I appreciate it.
It's our old, our old John D. Loder.
I think you can build one.
We're honest like you had it.
Yeah.
Let's get a one for the county and then one for Jase, he's on the board.
Conservation had a few higher bills too, but he sent me an email explaining everything, so.
Well, man, normally I'd never seen that hundred and fifty. I've seen it.
Private membership.
No, I, yeah, I'm just sitting here.
That must be for him and then the other ones for the company.
Yeah, they must have changed the way they do that, so. And then we, did we have a bunch of work done in the elevator too?
That is an annual cost for the maintenance over.
Well, that's for over there.
Last, last year we paid it monthly because we started kind of in the middle of the year and wasn't sure budgetary wise. We could swing the whole now, but.
And I see we used plenty of concrete made for Mount Carmel. Why in Mount Carmel?
There's some patch. We did that intersection, uh, with jewel.
Okay.
That was pretty bad. We're gonna be up after both the way.
I was gonna say, most of it, there wasn't that.
We did, then we did another little one, uh, kind of western church or that, a little dead end road there as well, two little ones actually.
Okay, that answers my questions.
Any more questions?
Come on, somebody else got me. Picture two.
Oh, I stated my parody.
Hey, there's no other question. Someone else.
I'll make a motion to approve the payables.
What's in half million? I'll second.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. While we're saying this, Doyle, do you want to come up to the door and you grab a chair and do just a quick presentation of your reasons for being here?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, go ahead.
Yep, go right ahead.
Um, I'd like to start out by saying I'm, I'm not really anti-pipeline. Um, as an economist, I have a real problem with taking valuable commodity out of state, not adding any value to it, and we're not even getting paid for it. Our ethanol plants have kind of made a deal with the devil, uh, so to speak, that, um, they are betting that they will get uh, forty-five Z money, which is subsidy money from the government, that will only pay in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Well, more than likely this pipeline, these pipelines aren't going to be done anywhere near that time. So essentially they have given this valuable commodity away for nothing. Um, so my thought process, it does us no good to process this commodity if we ruin our ethanol plants at the same time. So my goal was to come up with something that would be a win for the ethanol plants, be a win for our state and local economy, and hopefully be a win for the farmer also, uh, and the property owners. So I see, I searched out these companies. Their name is Carbon Saint LLC. And you have to have the LLC on there if you want to look them up online, because if you put anything with carbon in, carbon summit comes up. Um, the other one is Cap CO2. And both of these companies are looking to build methanol plants at the, near the location of the ethanol plant. Uh, essentially you'd have a hard time telling where one plant would start, one plant would end. They will agree to buy that CO2 from the ethanol plant and create methanol. The real purpose for this green methanol is that um, the shipping industry is being forced, uh, mostly by the European Union to go away from using diesel in those gigantic shipping container ships. And they want them to use methanol. Um, one of the big advantages, the methanol is it, it dissipates in water. So you don't have, if you have a spill, you don't have a major hazard there for the environment. Um, so the, uh, they are willing to sign a letter of intent with the counties, and part of this is because the counties have a lot of authority in us that I don't think most counties realize. The fact of the matter is counties have constitutional right of eminent domain. The state doesn't even have that. So if you have the right of eminent domain, you also would have very good standing in a courtroom to oppose eminent domain that doesn't create economic development. So the big difference here is we're, we're taking up a commodity, putting it in the hole in the ground if you sequester it. If you currently with our ethanol plants, one bushel of corn produces three gallons of ethanol, sixteen pounds of DDGs, and one gallon of corn syrup. If you add a methanol plant to this process, that same bushel of corn also produces two gallons of methanol. So that's a sixty-six percent increase in fuel production. But from dollar-wise, this green methanol is going to be worth considerably more than the ethanol. The ethanol will actually become a byproduct of this. Now, Iowa court has been quite specific that if eminent domain is going to be used for economic development, it cannot be just trickle-down economics. Well, if you look at Navigator, one of their big owners is Blackrock. There are only two countries in the world that have a GDP that is greater than the funds under management with Blackrock. That's about, that's the textbook definition of trickle-down economics when you're subsidizing the most wealthy companies in the world. So I think, um, what has happened recently, there's a woman, an attorney by the name of Anna Ryan. She was with the Office of Advocate Services and their job, she worked there for twelve years. Their job is to represent the people in dealing with IUB. And she basically was given the directive to stop asking questions on these pipelines, and she quit. Former Congressman Steve King has hired her to represent him at the IUB and is allowing counties and landowners to attach onto his uh, intervention, and he wants to go all the way to Springport. I believe this is where this is going to go, whether he wants to do it or not. So this is an opportunity for counties to obtain a much cheaper lawyer. I've looked at, I've looked at eminent domain attorneys. It took me about three weeks to find one that wasn't already involved, that was able to work in Iowa. And, um, it was Bell and McCormick in Des Moines, and they're extremely expensive and I'm, most counties don't, aren't slushed with extra cash. But I think that you have to look at, nobody's going to take a billion-dollar industry, wrap it up in a bow and drop it in your lap. We're gonna have to fight for it. So what I'm doing is I'm going to counties like this, and I'm trying to get counties together to work together to defray costs. And, uh, Tim Whipple is another attorney that is, is representing counties. Um, I see what Tim Whipple is doing as a defensive. A lot of the work is he's doing is for counties that are being sued already. I don't know whether a county is going to get through this without being sued. Whether you take a stand or whether you don't. But I think it's, uh, best to be proactive, and I also think that if you go with Anna Ryan, it's a very reasonable price, um, to be proactive. What I'd really like to do is, I'm, I'm not looking for action, but I'd kind of like some consensus that, that the board would at least like to look at this. I'd like to give, uh, uh, I'll share the letters of intent that I have with your auditor. And, um, I'd like to, you know, for you guys to at least kind of give a nod to your, your board chairman to at least talk to attorneys and, and consider the county's options and please bring it back to you.
I got a question for you, just because I'm learning, um, the carbon that they're trying to pipe out of there, why don't they, where is their money coming on that? Why don't they do this on their own? Make a methanol plant next to it. You know, what, where is the initiative behind this, or where's the money coming from?
So this is subsidized also.
Yeah.
Um, it, so the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act gave eighty-five dollars a ton to sequestration. It gives sixty dollars a ton for alternative uses like this, and for enhanced oil production, which we all know is fracking.
Yeah.
That gets sixty dollars a ton also. Um, so this would be subsidized by sixty dollars a ton, plus they are taking water, breaking it down into hydrogen and oxygen. And they add that hydrogen to the, um, CO2 to make the methanol.
Yeah.
And there is a subsidy for that also. So actually your, your, our state and local economy would be getting much more subsidy dollars right here local by doing this, rather than allowing the eighty-five dollars to go.
Get a half hour and they pipe it away.
Goes to North Dakota.
Yeah.
Or Illinois.
Okay.
Thank you.
So are any of the byproducts that come out of that, what do you do to the methanol?
The, the only thing that really comes off of it is the oxygen off the water. And, um, at this point in time, they, they don't have uses for that, but there are uses for it. Um, one of the things you can do, like, you can go into the, back into the ethanol plant and see the, the main thing for the ethanol plant is to lower the carbon index. And they can take that oxygen and pump it back into their process and, um, make that more efficient and lower their carbon score that way too. Um, it, it, they, they also have to run some of their, like, when you regen on a, on a motor, they take off the stack because, you know, like if you have a torch, you know, if you add oxygen, it makes it really hot fire. So they actually add what's off the stack and it'll re-burn that and make it cleaner coming off too. You have to remember, when they take the CO2 off of these ethanol plants, they are only taking the biological CO2, what comes off fermentation process. All of the CO2 coming from the natural gas that's firing the plant, it's still going up in the air.
Okay, my recommendation would be to get all that information to Courtney, and obviously we'd have to have our county attorney take a look at anything before we agreed. Um, does anybody have any more questions? I'm new to that whole process and I just learned more now.
Anybody building these methanol plants next to the ethanol?
Excuse me?
Is there actually anybody building a methanol plant next to the ethanol plant?
Cap CO2 is putting one in, uh, Illinois. Next. Uh, I'm blanking on the town right now. Um, and, uh, um, Carbon Saint LLC has contracts with some methanol plants, one in South Dakota that I know of. And I think they have one in Kansas. Um, I don't know when their construction, their construction date is yet. Uh, Cap CO2, I believe they're hoping to have be starting late this summer.
Yeah, so your, your primary objective is you, is get intent to self-support legal, legal staff?
That is part of the goal. The part of the goal is to, I mean, there is no reason to allow this commodity to leave the state for nothing. You know, um, if, if you look at, if you look at the, um, Sioux County, I kind of use them as an example. They sold two billion dollars worth of egg products. Well, that then wasn't corn and beans. The reason Sioux County, and Carroll County does a lot of this, is because you add value to the corn and beans you raise. Well, it's the same thing with the CO2. You know, if you compare Sioux County to Manona County, Manona County has the largest farm size average in the state. Sioux County has the smallest. Yet Sioux County is creating way more wealth than Manona County. Manona County is the largest exporter of corn in the state. Sioux County is the largest importer of corn in the state. It, it's a, it's this, if you want to grow your economy, you have to stir those dollars within that economy. And that creates a higher multiplier. And you, you just, well, to give you a, a big world example, Africa has more natural resources than any continent in the world. Chi- uh, Japan has almost no natural resources. The GDP of all of the countries in Africa added together are only fifty-seven percent of the GDP of Japan. Because the real wealth isn't in having the natural resource, the real wealth is in adding value to the natural resource. That's why companies like BlackRock with ten trillion dollars under management are after the CO2. Because they had all sorts of opportunity to go into our ethanol plants, and I know that they were asked. They never, they never did that. But the CO2 has much more chance of creating the type of return that they want.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, if you can get that to people, that'd be great.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
All right, next item on the agenda is secondary roads. Zach, you've got some utility permits and a construction update?
Two utility permits this morning, um, first one is for Windstream. This is for basically getting a, I think, fiber service board um, underneath the road to a resident, um, just on the east side of Halber.
That's the new section, uh, Roselle's.
It's, uh,
Out of there.
Roselle. Seven eighteen. Nothing, nothing else, uh, special about this one, just getting underneath, underneath pavement. Um, the second one is for Mid-American Energy.
David, that's gravel, isn't it?
It was a east of.
It's north of the, I've got David.
Two thirty-fifth. I'm sorry, and I looked at two forty. Yeah, you're right. I don't, it's, oh, he's. It'd be in section eight.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I didn't do my homework the last night.
Obviously, I didn't either.
I did, I got part of it, but because I have, uh, you continue on that one. The next one I have.
You have newspaper and radio?
Yeah, I do.
That's why.
No, and I'm, I'm, keep going.
Mid-American Energy is the next one, um, it's for Boring Electrical Service underneath the One Big Avenue in Pleasant Valley nine.
Wrong.
You're wrong too?
That's Grant thirty-three.
You're right. That's not Pleasant Valley, what the heck are they saying?
Look at you.
Except I skipped one.
First one, Grant.
I mean, Pleasant Valley nine.
Exactly, it's Grant thirty-two, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three.
Yeah.
So will you go and change these?
I'll, I'm, I'm writing, writing them in right now on the one, on the ones you're gonna sign.
Okay.
Wouldn't be thirty-two, thirty-three, it's just thirty-three, isn't it?
Well, it's going across the road, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's going from one side to the other.
Okay. I'm going by where the residents said.
Right.
But if you go to section nine of Pleasant Valley, you'd be down by her.
Right.
Obviously, Dean would.
Speaking of which, near me, were they bored? I think across the intersection, you may want to reach out to them. There's, there's part of it. Big hole. I don't know if you reach out to that company and read.
Yeah, they, they've had to fix some on Noble, like South Dick, you know, mine.
It's actually on Phoenix, like. Right on the team.
That's one of the biggest rain that we've had. We're starting to see some of that show up.
Yeah.
There's been some areas they've had to repair, so. Um, but this is to get electrical service to, uh, the resident, but.
I will, with those changes, I will make a motion.
I'd like to second that.
All right, there's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks for catching that, Dean.
Well, my problem is I, if I'd knew it earlier, I'd be able to let you correct it before we got up here, but I do a lot of stuff on Sunday.
I've left those for you. I want to make sure you're paying attention.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, as far as a construction update, um, the G-nine bridge is complete from the standpoint, what the contractor has to do, we do have a little bit of work we need to do. There's some, uh, flood down pipes, structures that need to go from the road dish to the creek that we're putting in instead of the contractor. That's how we admit it, is for them not to do it and for us to do it. So other than that, um, everything else is done, complete with that bridge.
So is it open through for traffic?
No, I believe they hauled the crane off late last week, but, uh, we still have it closed right now, so we can get our work done. I believe we're gonna get out of that this week. So it's not open yet. It will be posted by the end of the week.
Perfect.
Anybody have any more questions?
Um, two little things. Uh, Maple River and Mark Carmel, we did some full-depth concrete patching there, as well as some of the spray injection patching, the chips and the emulsion. Um, they're finishing up Mount Carmel today with that. He got rained out on Friday. And we got a couple other places, we're doing that in the county on some other roads. We're doing a little bit of that, but, uh, we've kind of, I guess, done everything that we were intending to do in Maple River and Mount Carmel as far as fixing up the roadways and, and drainage and things like that, so.
Time for another emulsion.
Chip on now. Um, not seal coat, but just, just patches, like, we're just trying to hold places that are, are breaking up a little bit, trying to hold them together, so. So. Um, and then three-hundred-fortieth Street, we are done with that for the most part. We're final, just doing some final grading down the intersection. Um, some, get some driveways put in and such. A little bit more crushed concrete to put on, and then we'll put gravel on top of that, so hopefully here in the next couple of days, we'll have that done as well. That's all I have.
Yeah, I was down, well, three times, so, and our staff did a pretty good job there. I thought they did a nice job of the way they had them.
Maple River was good.
Came up there.
Hopefully the water goes under the road the right way. Get some grass to grow.
Yeah.
So they're, they're working on a new truck ready, retro.
Working on, working on getting, I need the box to get welded on this week. Um, excuse me. Um, I believe they got the, like, the hydraulic console in for the controls that's put in. Um, they got their reservoir and the headache rack they put behind their mountain. Um, we're still waiting for the brackets for the stove equipment to get those mounted on the truck. Those haven't come in yet. There's, there's some production issues with the supplier on that. Um, so like, we're making. We got two more that are in Des Moines. We're working on getting I guess, their, their, their go-through, what they have to do to get them ready at Housby, so. Um, I respect they'll be in, in Carroll possibly this week, so.
And then the third one?
It's coming in July, yes, from what I understand.
Yeah, we have had a several sets spread them out, now they all come on down.
They're bombarded. So, no season's a long ways away.
Yeah.
We're gaining.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Zach? Did you want me to text you or are you good with what I told you?
I'm good with that.
All right, item number five, acknowledged receipt of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two county audit. Remind you that we're just approving receipt of the twenty-twenty-two.
Acknowledged.
So, and I would like everybody to look at the back, keep it just as I would discuss for the meeting. Just want a motion to acknowledge that we received it. I can make a motion to acknowledge that we received.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Authorized chair to sign. Roland Bell. Kind, am I saying that wrong? Letter for fiscal year twenty-three county audit services.
Was there a price of that, or is it just the same flash?
It should be in the letter.
Why, I, I didn't see it. I didn't either. Yeah, I didn't print it out.
Says our fee for service will be at our standard hourly rate plus out-of-pocket costs such as report. Reproduction. Doesn't actually have that.
All I've seen with that hourly rate.
I can just. Get in touch with Doug, Dustin, and ask him if he can give us a, for this thing. I will say that their fees are significantly less than using the state office, but if you want a price.
Well, I think we ought to have the hourly rate established in there. I mean, uh, and, and I'll go along with what you were saying, because we just did this for new opportunities. And there, for our audit, it's twenty-nine, two fifty, and they're gonna estimate two hundred and fifty hours to do it. They had a bid from Wick City, which is out of Minnesota, for thirty-eight thousand, and they were gonna spend a hundred and thirty-two hours on it. It looks like we're doing a spend like that. And we had all three requests for a bid from Weather, Weather, Maryweather and Wilson. And they did not provide us a bid because they're the person that does nonprofits, but who gone.
So, um, we can pull off on this. I've got to hold them and ask if we could, at least an hour. How many hours or like a total cost?
Yeah, I'm just, I would say at least that hourly rate should be established, yes. Cause all we're doing is, if, what we're improving there right now is for them to do it.
Didn't we give them a three-year contract? No. Okay.
No, I think we say yearly.
Yeah, cause that's why they're sending this letter.
But I mean, I have no problem with them doing it, but I think that we should have.
On that for next week.
Alright, item number seven, approved class C retail alcohol license for the Caribou and Iowa Beer Bus for the right drive.
Iowa Beer Bus, it's gonna be in Mount Carmel, right? Are you right?
Yes.
I don't see any problem either. I wanna make a motion to approve the Caribou and Iowa Beer Bus liquor license, alcohol license.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we need to do this separate? Approved right drive under permits, Iowa Beer Bus Back Pocket Brewing.
This is the formal permit.
Okay.
So they both gonna be in Mount Carmel then?
The one's gonna be west of Mount Carmel. Back Pocket Brewery is gonna be on one hundred and fortieth, right at Ivy. It's gonna be on private property.
Right there, it's Mount Carmel. It's about a eighth mile, quarter mile east of, uh, Ivy Avenue on the south side of the road, I think, right?
Right where they turn, the bikes will turn right there from Greve and head east toward Mount Carmel. I'll make a motion to approve, um, Iowa Beer Bus Back Pocket Brewing and Borrelonman in Mount Carmel.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, item number nine, approved the CBVG Downwind Assistant Program, GAX number ten and GAX number eleven. For the one amount is thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and the second one is four thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. I'll second. There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Need a practice signature under Clement's signature and.
Um, we can go ahead and discuss the flats for item number ten.
I looked over the flats, they're, um, just a line reestablished, and then the other two are acreages that are being established. They all look adequate to me, so I will approve the flats for Monte Rorbrack and Glidden section thirty and Lloyd Burns in section twenty-nine of Maple Rivers. And AMFJ Farms LLC in section twelve of Union.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, approved fireworks display permit for two, 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 four, two hundred and twentieth street around Jergens, and the date.
It's twenty-third.
August twenty-third.
I'll make a motion to the group.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, what I got sent, kind of cut off where you're supposed to sign. So if you wanted to sign, like, on the bottom and date it, and I'll just send him that, okay?
Alright. Take a drink of coffee before I get into these.
Take a deep breath.
Alright, the newer management annual updates. We got Meyer three, section fourteen, Sheraton Township, changed crop rotation or optimum yields, updated, updated Brussels and P indexes. Brussels, Meyer two, section fourteen, Sheraton Township, no changes. Randy Cohearse, number one, section sixteen, Wheatland Township. Moth falling site due to no animals in barn.
That's gonna settle.
Right.
I'm assuming he's just saying there's no animals there.
Well, he's closing them down, basically.
Alright, Randy Cohearse, number two, section twenty-one, Wheatland Township, moth falling site due to no animals in barn. Joey Shown, section twenty-nine, Jasper Township, changed crop rotation. And or optimum yields, updated Brussels and P indexes. Ryan Shelf Finisher, section six, niece township, no changes. Schumacher and Son Site One, section sixteen, Pleasant Valley Township, no changes. Schumacher number two, Schumacher and Son number two, section sixteen, Pleasant Valley Township, no changes. N and M Farms number two, section twenty-eight, Arcadia Township, no changes. Claybrook Site, section thirty-one, Union Township, no changes. Antover Family Farms, section thirty-two, Viola Township, Audubon County. Crop, changed crop rotation or optimum yields. Joe Tomka, section thirty-five, Arcadia Township, no changes. Smith Livestock, section one, Washington Township. Updated soil samples and P indexes. Brandon Kirkoff, section thirty, section seven, Eden Township. Updated soil samples and P indexes. Birch Pork, section thirty-one, Arcadia Township, no changes. Oliver Counter, section fourteen, Grant Township, added acres. Alan and Lisa Ashide, section seven, Rose, Rosel Township. Updated soil samples and P indexes. Ranch Creek, section twenty-five, Sheraton Township. Updated soil samples and P indexes. Pig Haven, section fourteen, Glidden Township, no changes. Kenneth and Jeff Sanders, section nineteen, Maple River Township, original plan. And PI dash two seven one Finisher, section thirty, Newton Township, original plan.
Almost out of letters now.
Now we're to committee reports.
Celebrated the Fourth of July. That was it. Um, yes, I have conservation tonight, um, Florida Health on Wednesday. And Thursday I have region twelve, uh, policy council. I think that's it. I can go next. Uh, it's two weeks since we've had, on, uh, Wednesday of the, June twenty-eighth, I had Roman Hill's, uh, board meeting. You did, uh, go through all the financials, early sign there, um. We did, uh, do clarification of the Westville contract for the year two twenty-four. Uh, and also we did contract for New Hope Village, Humboldt County Memorial Hospital Integrated Telehealth Partners. Sioux Land Mental Health Crisis Contact and Plainsberry Mental Health Turning Point Contract. Uh, then we did have a request from Siouxland Mental Health for additional funding for Trail United Lawson. So that guy signed it, and, uh, that was like a hundred and thirteen thousand. And then we had a request from them also for some landscaping for the price center. We did put that on hold. I was first, you know, that should be on a regular operation maintenance. Why should we be paid, like, what we're gonna, you know, open a can of worms here and keep adding on? Well, it happens to be that reaction on the bill. So we did, we did table for now and get, and they did not have very good, uh, hopes on it. So that was it. We're now having a meeting on July eighteenth. I, I do have the audit here if you just wanna look at this, your file forty. Uh, but we did get that to us. Uh, and again, I did, um, tell you that Carroll County will have a board member on that board as, right now. Because of the way the thing is situated that we have basically the number of institutions that we have in the county and stuff like that. Uh, the only thing I'm gonna yeah, I'm gonna write some changes. Uh, I think I sent this all out to you last night. I hope you all paid attention to it. This is what's proposed as far as, this came from Chad Jensen. Oldford areas. So whoever's having a service here, like particularly mental health, that will all go to one vendor, and then they will pay all, everybody be a subcontractor there. Well, one of the concerns I have, especially with new opportunities, we had these county, we're gonna wind up after, well, before this, we just submitted it to the state. And so, the other concern I have with this, if there's gonna be somebody that's gonna be the administrator and funding in there, we're gonna race him off to time. That means less, less dollars for services.
So is this part of the July one realignment that kicked?
Yeah, part of that, uh, the human services, uh, it's, uh, elf and human services working with, uh, health management's HMA to kind of combine stuff. But I think with by going these regions, it's gonna affect a lot of different things. It's gonna affect also, if you see on that list, uh, local public health is involved in there, environmental aid, emergency preparedness, now our emergency preparedness that comes from, we're in one district which is out of whole. Well, look, that, that's all changing now. So there's gonna be a lot of changes. Uh, I did send this to Becky. She is going to go up to Storm Lake. I am kind of waiting to see what my schedule is like. I may go to Storm Lake, but on behalf of, is on present, new opportunity. And with the county, I may go up there, I may soon, I don't know, two of my schedules. And we have a board helping you on Wednesday to ensure a lot. Yeah, she said she was gonna bring that up. Uh, okay, and then back to the mental health things, uh, as you can see here is after the way to realignment, this is the members that will be on the board, uh, health up there, Roy Mills. So. Okay, enough on mental health. Uh, then on Thursday, I had new opportunities board meeting. Again, there we went through the financials. We accepted our nine ninety for fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, and then we approved a bid for fiscal year twenty-three audit in, which, uh, Rowan L Bell told us twenty-nine thousand two fifty. In regard to, uh, head start, an early head start, and we went through all that, their financials. We also approved the budget revisi- revise. Revert revision, uh, we're gonna purchase, we were purchased one vehicle now with the way the budget sets. We're gonna also do a second vehicle, and then we had discussion in yard this year, realignments. We did approve a heap weatherization assistance program of two hundred and thirty thousand and ARDPA integrated provider network supplemental for a hundred and eighty-eight thousand twenty-nine dollars. And then we had a lot of, uh, amendments to different contracts. Uh, they did change the name on the state the way they're realigning things. Um, then on the third, I did go over to Manning on their meetings, their TIP and urban renewal. This is their plan, um, uh, would be set like this. Uh, they are, they're building a whole bunch of small lots. Pretty cheap home. But they're smaller lots, smaller homes with very little garbage front or back. And you, you see these in Ankeny, like where you have condos.
Sort of like, doesn't it?
Yeah. And then they're doing sixteen regular sized lots over here, so you can see that.
Where's this at?
Okay. Equivalent to, this would be, uh, the new no, the new, not that, nursery room, but, uh, forty-four.
Oh, that assisted living?
Yeah, assisted living, that's what there's on you.
So what is that?
Yeah, the high school be over here.
Is there a church here?
Probably back here anyways. This would be the ground, or there's private property over there, and that private individual plans on, gonna be up more here too, but he, he also, they bought part of this time in. So they're doing a TIP and urban renewal. Very aggressive.
This right here is.
Well, it's a different thinking that's something.
It is. One of these pocket neighborhoods, is that?
I think that's what they call it, yeah, I think that's what.
They share a front yard, I think, or something.
Well, you sure, you sure common backyard, that's you put your paper on, everything's back here. But I did attend that. Uh, this week I have newspaper and radio. And we were supposed to have a CCGP board meeting tomorrow, but all the ones in July have been canceled due to right drive and, uh, baseball tournaments and stuff going on, so they're kind of busy though. And that's what I'm gonna stick with, and I, and like you said, I may, and this other meeting.
Okay, I can go. Uh, region twelve council, government, ECAT, nothing new. Uh, next meeting is August seventeenth. Region five hazmat, uh, nothing new. I'm still waiting on a date, uh, for that next meeting. Uh, childcare meeting is July seventeenth, nothing new there. Uh, still waiting on a date for the number one. Carroll County joint nine-one-one maybe. As well as the preparedness meeting. A safety committee, I am gonna meet on Tuesday with Terry Axman from the Mid Iowa Insurance to just try to kind of do a deep dive into the past six years of our claims versus our incidents and see if I can do the chart or, or make something so that we can have a visual with that, see if there's a correlation. Uh, workforce development, I am gonna meet with Kim, T, T even taller after this meeting today. Just to do some brainstorming, I believe. Last week, I, or this would have been two weeks ago, I sat in on the board of adjustment on June twenty-seventh regarding the solar panel request. I went to the comprehensive plan meeting on June twenty-eighth. And this last Saturday, I went to a
Request, I went to the comprehensive plan meeting on June twenty-eighth, and this last Saturday I went to a. A meeting regarding the CO two pipelines in Fort Dodge, and there were a lot of concerns um, amongst the group with safety. Of the pipelines, eminent domain, and also the Biden administration's thirty thirty land ocean conservation plan, that was brought up. Quite a bit, um, I did schedule the, a Zoom meeting for the eighth Health and Human Services for July twentieth, so I'm gonna. Get on that and listen as well, that's all I have.
Monday, June twenty-sixth, Taylor Boyle called, that was the due date for all of the food applications for ragtime commits in the county. And I think she's got everything she needs now. Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, I attended the board of adjustment meeting for Tim Newton Solar Farm on one hundred and fiftieth street. Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, Zach and I went and looked at Soul Farm on one hundred and fiftieth. Utility work on Double Avenue, the G nine bridge on Phoenix, Sparks gravel pit, stockpile. And three hundred and fortieth and Mahogany, so kind of, we're all over the county. At seven o'clock last, the twenty-eighth, I went to the comprehensive plan meeting at region twelve, so he was there. Friday, I attended Access DC at ten o'clock, Gene wasn't there, so his place. Then Wednesday, July fifth, we had a meeting with S C H invading, it's a every two week meeting on progress. On the court out, nothing new there. Um, Friday, I went out to Rose, looked at Pables, did them here, met with Dalton and Polly in the courts. Jason in the comm center trying to figure out the fire alarm panic button situation, I think we gotta fix for now, Feld's gonna be getting a new quote. On the panic buttons, because those are all, the courts were hardwired now, they're. For now they're wireless, this week, tomorrow morning, six thirty, um, executive board meeting in solid waste. And Thursday night is policy council, region.
All you go to access Washington, do we have any topics that we run, the topic that we've got so far has been that EMS stuff we've done last couple of years. For the health is.
There was, there was several ideas of people who were there in healthcare, uh, the gals from Manny. They were kicking around ideas, they do have tentative dates they're thinking of, scheduling. Um, also Friday I did stop the ambulance, and I think this week the ambulance will finally, the new ambulance will finally be delivered. Fell outside and do some work on it, get the cabinets on the interior the way they need to be. They do, yeah, we haven't paid anything for it, also. We're still holding um, R E W's check for the abatement on the asbestos pending repair of the upstairs floor, hopefully this week. We get an estimate on the. I think so, I had a schedule, yeah, they're recent, no, I think we're moving right along. There might be a revision aid coming to the design plans. It's not too late yet, so that needs to be discussed also, that's all, is anybody wanting that highway thirty coalition?
When, what time does that start? I tried to click on it and it, yeah, um, I thought about it.
I've listened to a lot of you, but this one is for.
It's in Ames, or no?
Well, this, there's one in Ames this weekend, I. I don't, you, I go down, gone down there, but I haven't lately. Yeah, and it's just more or less important how we film, it's all against.
Last week I visited the great state of Florida, Florida to live and see what their disaster recovery plan was compared to what we have. Um, they're doing very.
What is our hurricane disaster recovery part?
What is ours? Uh, this week I have Wesco tomorrow night, um. And then I'm gonna have a phone conversation with Matt Miners, because he wants a letter of an intent or to, um. Approve or get behind that thriving community grant fund that they can get, so he wants us to be able to sign. A letter that would incentivize builders to come here and get a tax credit, I think it is, as a credit. So I'll talk to him this weekend, then region twelve on Thursday, we have executive, and then we go on to policy council that night.
Are we meet on twenty-fourth, did we decide that?
Do you guys, we have a build day that day, so if you're not gonna meet, you need to tell us down, so that.
That's fine, because I have it on the bottom of the page to discuss. Let's go ahead and adjourn and then we'll discuss it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. There's a motion and second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.